Good evening. I'd like to call the Windsor Board of Education's special meeting with public forum with Finance Committee immediately following of Tuesday, January 31st. First item is the public forum on the budget. It's limited to 30 minutes. And Ms. Daly, can you read your script?
Good evening. This is Robyn Daly from the Superintendent's Office. If there is anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your comments into the Q and A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar. Or you may raise your hand on your computer if your device has a microphone by selecting the participants icon on the Zoom menu bar and then clicking raise hand or by dialing star nine on your phone. You will be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. When you are called on, you'll be prompted with you are now unmuted. For clear communication, we ask that you do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own.
Okay, thank you. If there is anybody who sees us via Zoom or is in the room at the two and a half minute mark, Mr. Lockhart will raise a red card. And at the three minute mark, he will raise it and hold it up. And please, at that point, conclude your remarks. Is there anybody in the boardroom who'd like to address the board regarding the proposed budget? Seeing and hearing none. Is there anyone online or on the phone?
There are currently no attendees in the Zoom session.
Without objection, I'm gonna close public forum. Okay. Then I'm gonna ask for a motion.
Move for adjournment.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. The public forum is adjourned, and we're going to go into the Finance Committee.
Good evening. Going to call the Windsor Board of Education Finance Committee meeting of January 31st, 2023 to order. Could we please stand for the pledge in a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Just for the board, Mr. Willston will be present. He is running slightly late. He has informed us that he is running late, so he will be here. Before we start, I just want to make sure everybody on the board knows that we are going to be doing the Tuesday, January 31st portion of the agenda, which is the questions. We're going to be going over the athletics, that's scholastic athletics, and going through various other amounts of things this evening. We will take a restroom break at the halfway point at 7:30. I will be banging the gavel at 7:45, whether you are in your seat or not, to continue the meeting since the quorum has been established at that point. And I do not anticipate us being here at 9 o'clock. So we are not gonna have the staff to parrot to us. And I'm hopeful that we are prepared to give them our questions as we see fit. Is there any objection to how we're gonna proceed this evening? With that being said, we will go into audience to visitors. Ms. Daly, a blessing to have you back with us. Could you please go through the script?
Good evening. This is Robyn Daly from the Superintendent's Office. If there is anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your comments into the Q and A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar. Or you may raise your hand on your computer if your device has a microphone by selecting the participants icon on the Zoom menu bar and then clicking raise hand or by dialing star nine on your phone. You will be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. When you are called on, you'll be prompted with you are now unmuted. For clear communication, we ask that you do not place your call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own.
Thank you, Ms. Daly. For those that are within the room, you're given three minutes to speak. At the 2:30 mark, Mr. President will raise his red card. And at three minutes, he will raise and hold it up for you to wind up your comments. For those that are in Zoom, same concept, only that he will interrupt and state that you have 30 seconds remaining. And at the three minute mark, he will ask you to finish or cease your comment. At this point, I'll start with those on Zoom. Is there anybody on Zoom wishing to be recognized?
There are currently no attendees in the Zoom session.
All right. Zoom, none. Anyone within the boardroom wishing to be recognized at this time? I am seeing none. Without objection from the board, I will close audience to visitors. Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none. Agenda item seven has now been satisfied. Next is agenda item eight, which is the budget proposal. Recognizing Dr. Hill with us, starting with the questions from January 24th, please. Dr. Hill.
You'll have to remember my microphone today?
Sorry, for one moment, Dr. Hill. For all of us here on the dais or anyone with the wireless mic, we have to make sure that when we are speaking, your mic is green to make sure that the listening public can hear us as well, including myself. There's been times where I spoke last week and my mic was red and they couldn't hear us. Or it was muffled with the mic that's up in the ceiling. So if you intend to speak, please make sure that your mic is green first before you speak. Dr. Hill?
Thank you. I was gonna say, so the questions that were most recently submitted, you should all have before you pack it with those questions and the responses to those questions. I don't believe you want me to sit here and read through this, but you have that packet.
All right. Any questions from the responses? And Mr. Halleck from the previous meeting, did you receive the response to your questions from the last meeting, sir?
I did, yes. I just received them.
All right, thank you. Any responses or questions about the questions from the January 24th meeting? I am seeing and hearing none. I'm going to consider that objective satisfied for this evening without objection. All right. Dr. Hill?
Thank you. So we will proceed then, and I will call Athletic Director Chris Fulton to the table to present the interscholastic athletics portion of the budget.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How's everyone?
We are well. Good, thank you. So my name is Chris Fulton. I humbly serve as the Director of Athletics for Windsor Public Schools. We have a lot of great things going on. I just got a few notes I wanted to make sure I took here. We have some successes this year so far. Looking at our field hockey squad, who has got more participation out of our young ladies. They've won more games this year than you have in previous years. So we won four meets this year, more matches. And so I have a running joke with the parents. It's one of the one places I could go where I could actually watch the game. And so no one bothers me. I can watch, I can strategize with the coach, and I can see what's going on. Also, cross-country did really well this year. And obviously, some of our bigger, more bigger sports like basketball and baseball and football typically are competitive and they do well. So I'm just addressing some of the other successes that we're having that are not normally recognized in front of, either in the public or in front of the board. This year, our wrestling team, who's had a match tonight, is doing excellent. They've one of the better seasons that they've had in a long time. Actually have more boys out participating than we've had in a long time. I think last year, we had close to 20. It's over 30 now, right? And so we're excited about that. I'm also excited about this spring bringing on boys volleyball. When I took over the job in 2020, when I came in February of 2020, I had some young men come to me and say they wanted to be a part of a boys volleyball team. And obviously, we know that the pandemic hit. Pandemic hit. We had a list of kids, and we didn't move forward with that. But we did come back in 2021. We had a lot of restrictions around protocols, around COVID-19. So we didn't put it in place at that time, but we had a list of 23 boys who were interested in participating. And those same young men came back again last year with the same concept that they wanted to continue to participate. So what I said to them was, they need to, you know, we need to get, we had a meeting. We had a parent meeting. We had a meeting with the kids. We hired, we got a coach that would help us from Husky, and we said we'd have a club. They met every day. They practiced. We had a couple of scrimmages. They did well. And so as we moved forward, we thought it was a really good time to put it in place for this year. We will not be in our conference, which is the CCC. We'll be in an independent league, which is a bunch of schools that are like us, are really similar to us, who are just putting boys volleyball into place. So we should be pretty competitive in that way, and that will take this year as a way to get better. And then next year, we'll have a full schedule from the CCC. Not this spring, but the following spring of 2024. So, you know, we'll also talk about, well, safety, right? And so I know that's a big concept. Our athletic trainer is here every day at every game. She is leaving to move to Georgia. She got another job in Georgia. But Selectus promised that we will definitely be covered at those games. We know what we've watched on TV over the last couple of weeks, a month or so, how important it is for us to have our medical personnel in place at all times. At times, you know, there are times when we don't. But when we do that, we try to, all of our coaches are CPR first and first aid certified. So, you know, we feel comfortable with what we have in place if, for some reason, the trainer is not there as well. Obviously, we've also seen in the news a lot of issues that are occurring at games and things. We recently had to put some things in place for a game against Middletown. We feel like, you know, with more vigilance, right? Making sure that we are really intentional about the things that we do and the measures we put in place, that we are very comfortable, really safe with it. We've, since football season, we've put on the bright yellow shirts. That's been very helpful. We think that is proactive in making sure that, you know, maybe some people, when you're close in proximity, they may think about doing some silly stuff, but then they don't. People can identify who's working the games. And so we feel comfortable with that. We've been in collaboration with the police. And when we need their assistance, they've been very helpful. The town has been very helpful as well in terms of getting us certain things. Like, for example, during the football season, we need the fences put up. They came, they put the fences up so we can, you know, make sure that we're pushing people the way we want them to go. They put the no parking signs up, so that's very helpful. So the town has been very, using all their resources to make sure that we are keeping our things safe. When we have indoor events, indoor events are a lot different than outdoor events because they're more confined. So, you know, we are, since about a month ago, we are doing pre-game assignments. Like, so I meet with the security before a game. We go over what our assignments are. I have written them out. So we put responsibilities in place so everybody knows exactly what it is they need to do. And so, and the outlines, and we put a responsibility sheet together so they understand that. So we feel very confident that we can keep our people safe at the games just with vigilance and better planning, more intentional planning. So I just wanted to address that as well. Very happy with our academics this year in terms of athletics. We put a real big issue on making sure that we are being intentional about, I use that word intentional because it's very important to me at this point, them being engaged in their grades versus them just kind of being a task completion type thing. And so as the quarter just ended, Amy and I looked at the grades. And unfortunately, we did have to say to some kids that they couldn't participate anymore because of the board policy, but it's been significantly less. So we feel like we're making big strides in that way. I'm not sure if we know about how I do this. We go about, every two weeks, we look at their grades. If they have poor grades, we kind of push them to the support systems that we need, whether it's the SEC, whether it's to send them to their teachers. We do notify the coaches. We do say to the coaches, if in the following week, if they're not, those grades are not up, then there are gonna be some, we'll hold them accountable for it, depending on what that looks like. So I think I've addressed a few things that I feel are really successful. One of the things that we have to, we're putting in this year is, or for next year, is the CIAC is mandating that we have a shot clock. So basketball is going to a shot clock, so we have to make sure that that gets put in before next season. And among other things, like I said, I'm really excited about the volleyball program. I know people may have some questions about it, but I'm really excited about that. And the kids seem to be excited. We actually have a young man who's already, he's doing some Husky stuff, and he's already gonna sign a scholarship to go to college and has not played a varsity game. So we're really excited about the talent we have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions for the Athletic Director?
Yes, ma'am.
I do have, sorry. Thank you. I do have one question. If a child isn't performing to the required level grade-wise and they do better during that quarter, are they able to participate in the sports or not?
So if the quarter ends, so basically, we use, the rule is that we use the grades from the previous quarter. So if in that previous quarter, they have two F's or haven't achieved a 71, then although they're doing better during that next quarter, they're not eligible until that quarter ends.
Okay.
Right? So this is why we have the two-week check-in so that we can have our kids engaged and so hopefully, we can keep them from, you know, flunking off and being eligible.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's not really a question, it's a comment. As you know, I'm a sports mom. And I just have to say that our team, our trainers, the people that react when we had an issue at one of the basketball games was immediate. We've been to different towns and the, things can happen, right? Am I wrong? When it's not expeditious, when you people have to wait, you have a child bleeding on a court and they're taking their time to get there. So I just want to lift up the fact that, I know we have trainers that have been cycling in and out, but we always hire amazing trainers and people who are professionals in their fields because we have been to places and I've seen people not be as quick and to the point. And we know timeliness is so important when it comes to our kiddos and getting hurt on the court field, whatever the case may be. So I just want to lift the fact that I've seen the team in action and kudos to them because time is of the essence. Thank you.
Thanks.
I see a finance hockey cooperative here. Is that regular ice hockey?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
And how many kids do we have? And what is, can you explain that?
So we have three right now who are participating. We have five go out. And you're talking about boys, right? Right? So we have five go out, three are involved, two play a lot. So when you have, in hockey, you can be a practice player and you don't actually play in the games. You kind of go to practices. Or you could just say, I'm not gonna do that and go to the junior levels. But we have two who play each game regularly.
And what's the cost here?
So right now, there is no cost for Windsor Public Schools because prior to me getting here, Mr. Rissar, Windsor used to have an abundance of hockey players. And Windsor was the whole school. And so, because we were the whole school, we took the brunt of all the finances. So now we're not the whole school, and so it's kind of reciprocated. So if our numbers get a little higher, then they would say we have to, you know, punch in some money, which is why I put down there, there's a, knowing that that might be the case somewhere down the line.
Could you just elaborate on the NCAA clearinghouse process? You say you informed the staff, students, and families about the process.
Right. So last year, we had, two years ago, we had a Zoom because of COVID. Last year, we had a actual, we met in the auditorium. And what that, the clearinghouse is eligibility for kids who want to go get scholarships for sports, Division I and Division II. And so we just, we bring them in, myself and Mr. Broxterman, who's a counselor at the school. And we just go through the process. We used to go with what they call the 48H, which is, it's a sliding scale, which you have to have a higher, the higher your GPA is, the lower you have to score on the SAT. But they've gotten rid of the SAT. So now that they've gotten rid of the SAT, all we are forming our kids at this particular point is that they have to have a 2.3 in their core classes. So core classes, meaning math, science, English, and social studies. And then some, maybe a few electives and world languages.
I think that's, I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I think a couple of questions have been answered.
Okay.
You explained about how students' grades are looked at every couple of weeks. Is that the monitoring system that's listed here?
Yes.
Thank you. And as to volleyball, I think you said about 20, 23 students?
Yeah, we have 23 last year. Right now, we have 16 signed up, but obviously, we use final forms.
We have listed for girls volleyball, three coaches. So I assume freshman team, JV, and varsity. I assume there's just gonna be a varsity team then for volleyball? Because you said you're only asking for one coach.
Right. We're gonna have two teams. We have JV and varsity.
But one coach will...
Yeah. Girls had 70 kids show up to try out. We have 48 on the team, so we needed three. So we don't have that amount of demand at this particular time to have to have three coaches.
Thank you. Each of our teams, when they're home and away, is there a particular trainer that's trained them?
We have one trainer.
Yeah.
Very difficult. So we, she starts off in the training room with, you know, either treatment and taping. And then once she does that, then she spreads out to the field. It's easier when we're inside because it's confined. So we have the gym and the pool and then in that area. It's really difficult in the fall and the spring, which is why we're lucky enough to have those gators, right? So they drive around the gators to get to different places. And I really realized the need for extra hands this fall when we had the fields open and Sage Park was up and running as well. It was a great thing to see that many kids out there exercising and having fun and being, and be connected to something. But it was really difficult for her to get to everyone. So, yeah, she does. Our trainer does, not the coaches.
So I just want to highlight that when we travel or we're at home, every one of our teams should have this type of stuff readily available. So I'm trying to understand what is readily available for Windsor right now? And if it's not something to the board's satisfaction, what can we do to make something readily available?
So, like I said, what we have readily available is that every year, every two years, everyone has to go to CPR first aid training, right? So we do have that. We have concussion, which is module 20 as well, so they're aware of the concussion protocols as well. The AED stays with the trainer, so we do have that trainer who is, who has the full scope. We do have a doctor, right, who comes to football games and things. But in terms of what you're talking about, in terms of having an AED with every team, we do not. Every team has a first aid kit, that's for sure. But the AED, we do not have. And so we work with what we have. So I can't always say that another team, another school has an AT. So some schools do not. There is a shortage, just like everything else, teachers and everything. So I can't, I can't always say that they're going to have the same level of care that we have here at Windsor.
I thank you for that transparency. I know when we give our final deliberations, this is something that I'm going to pinpoint on. We have our kids represent Windsor at the highest level. And I just want to make sure that we're doing the best we can. I know we don't have an infinite amount of resources, but those kids, I mean, one of the coaches, a coach can become ill. We just gotta make sure we have things in place, at least for home games, where we're prepared to handle anything and everything at a moment's notice. And just having one AED unit with one trainer going around all the different fields and bangles and stuff, that's a bit much, especially when if someone is definitely under duress, they're not breathing, there's no circulation. The more time that expires, the more unlikely that the person may survive. And that's something that I, quite frankly, I can't have on my conscience. So I'll leave that point right there, just for everyone to marinate on. But I just think we need to do whatever is necessary within our building.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. It's a concern if no one saw the football game between the Bills and the Bengals, how important it was critical that trained medical personnel was there on the spot, with the AED, with the automatic compression machine, doing CPR on that young man on the field. I dare not something like that happen to one of our athletes or visiting athlete, and we're not prepared for it. So if we're openly saying that we go to other towns and they're not openly prepared to take care of our own, I think we need to go above and beyond a little bit to make sure we take care of our own. So that's the point that I'm trying to raise with this board and to make sure that this is something that we strongly consider.
Just on that, are you saying?
I'm sorry. Dr. Hill, did you want to respond?
Yes. Ms. Batchelder, wanted to say something?
So I just wanted to update the board. So at the high school, we have four in the building. We have one in the nurse's office, the library, the BD intersection, and also in the pool. Like Mr. Fulton said, the athletic trainer always has an AED which they bring out to the field. And I just ordered through Marty Maynor 12 brand-new ones to outfit the entire district with new ones because ours are roughly nine or 10 years old. But I can absolutely request, you know, quotes for maybe a few more for just the sport teams so they can bring them like we do at our home games, football games. See how much those are.
Appreciate that, Dr. Hill through Ms. Batchel. I appreciate that. Ms. Pounds?
Well, I just, did I understand that the other team comes, does not bring a professional medic trainer? We're responsible for it entirely?
So not, so again, we, yes. So we, there's a partnership with that because when, when we go to other places, our AT is here, right? So we're hoping that their AT, they have an AT in place. We typically send, you know, and I might get in trouble for saying this, but we typically try to send our AT to the football games. It's the most violent of the sports that we have. So when we go away, we try to get her there. But sometimes it doesn't, doesn't work that way because we have events here as well.
I really appreciate that transparency. I think with all the sports injuries that's been happening lately, it's been a heightened sense of awareness. And I think, to Ms. Taylor's point, it is our responsibility. When people come to your house, you take care of them. And I definitely expect that we go to someone else's home, they treat us with the same level of respect. I'm not sure what the CIAC regulations are on this particular point, but I see it as a safety issue. And I could care less about the quality of our team, how good they are, how horrible they are. At the end of the day, is that we're teaching them life skills and that they are in a safest manner possible, depending on the sport. And we understand injuries can happen in any sport at any time. It could be a non-contact injury, and you can tear an ACL, or you could tear an Achilles. So it's a risk that we do when we allow these kids to play on behalf of Windsor. So not to belabor the point, I just want to make sure you have, as the Athletic Director, when you ask for a budget through the superintendent, you have everything you need for a child to be safe because what we don't want to have happen, something happens, and then we're caught like, oh, we're flat-footed and it didn't go right. I can speak from personal experience. My son tore his shoulder, and you guys were great for him. Got him out the water. I don't know how you got him out. He was a big boy. Got him out the water and it was, he tore his shoulder. So it was good to see that the staff was actually there, trained, ready to go. I just want that level of care, not only for my child, but every single child in the town of Windsor and every single town that comes within our district. And when we go to their district... in every single town that comes within our district, and when we go to their district. So that's something that I'm going to be looking at you through the superintendent for.
Good.
Ms. Taylor? David, did you go?
I did. I did. I went once.
All right, Mr. Pounds, did you need to go again?
No.
Ms. Taylor?
I was injured in cheerleading, of all things, right? Shoulder, ambulance, the whole thing. Is, do we have an ambulance at every football game? Am I, is that correct? I just want to make that clear for people who don't know. There's always an ambulance there as well.
Right, ambulance and doctor.
Important to, to highlight. It's not like we're just out here doing this full contact sport without it. There is an, okay, great, thank you.
And just one more point to piggyback on that. Is there ambulance typically available at any other sport and event other than football?
No.
Okay. And that's not the protocol that's typical CIAC. CIAC is just football, just because of the nature of the?
Nature of the game.
Okay.
Mr. Fury?
Following up on this athletic trainer for away games. Is there a service that if you know a week in advance, or two, or several weeks in advance, you're going to go to away, to a town where they don't have an athletic trainer? Is there a cadre of contractual athletic trainers or sports medicine facilities that you can go to to hire people on a daily, on a, as, as, as needed basis?
So I'm pretty sure we could, but we're contracted out through select physical therapy, so we would have to go with them.
But you could, okay, so it is, but there is someplace you could go?
You could, yes. But we'd, contractually, we would have to go to select physical therapy.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, this was a great discussion. A great evening. I like this. Anything else for the athletic director? Keep going with your doing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Recognizing Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Fulton. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Maella Aguirre Ernest, who is our adult ed coordinator, to come up.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I hope I can keep the good mood going. You can hear me, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, so far, our program has met the following goals. We continue to collaborate with the Hartford American Job Center. Through our collaboration, we were able to provide some WEOWA funding for one of our GED graduates. She successfully completed her CDL training and obtained her CDLA license at no cost to her. This has opened a lot of opportunities for her and her family, especially as a single parent. I also continue to sit on the North Central Connecticut Adult Coalition Task Force, which is in partnership with the Capital Workforce. The goal is to share resources with the 37 partner towns to provide pre-apprenticeship opportunities for our students in the high in-demand industries right here in Connecticut, such as manufacturing, healthcare, construction, IT, business services, finance, transportation, and warehousing. I also visited Manchester Community College to learn more about their adults and transition program as a pathway for post-secondary education for our high school completion students. We have increased our Windsor community participation in mandated enrichment programs by advertising in the Journal Inquirer, Windsor Public School Virtual Backpack, website, Instagram, Windsor Chamber Commerce, First Town Downtown Calendar, Telemundo, and participating in the great Windsor Public School Block Party. If you didn't go, you should go. That was really awesome. We have also populated the Windsor Lox and Bloomfield libraries with our program brochures and have gotten students both in our mandated and our enrichment program. We have so far published three newsletters that are shared with the Adult Education Staff, Students, and the Board of Education. Thank you for those of you who have let me know that they enjoy reading the newsletters. Registration for our high school completion, English as a Second Language and Citizenship classes has been streamlined and made easier by providing a direct link to registration and assessment on our website. Our support percentage from the Connecticut State Department of Education this year is 37.53%. So far, we have had 142 students walk through our door. Our program just started yesterday for our spring semester. We are serving students from 32 countries, including three from Ukraine. We've had four general educational development graduates so far. Also, this is the first year that we are offering the National External Diploma Program as another way to obtain a high school completion certificate. We have three students enrolled. This is a high school competency-based program and takes an average of six months to one year to complete. This is a great fit for an adult who is highly motivated and self-directed. It's totally confidential and is built around the student's work schedule. In collaboration with the Office of Family and Community Partnership, we have established a clothing closet and more, which provides clothing, shoes, and toiletries to assist students for their career process. This closet is available to any student attending classes at LPW. One of our students, Doreen, who is our first student to enroll in the NEDP program. She is projected to graduate hopefully by June 7th, which will be our graduation ceremony. I hope you guys can attend. Our program was able to help her get a job at the deli at Geisler's. She doesn't have a car, so she, but she lives nearby, so she's able to walk there. And that's really helped out with her family finances. It did take a visit from me to the manager, but got her done. We were also able to provide a donated bike to another graduate of ours who was having transportation barriers. So we truly support our students any way we can. And that's about it.
All right. Thank you very, very much. I will open it up to the board. Is there anyone that would like to start the discussion? Looking to my right first? I see nothing. I will pivot to my left.
Pivoting.
Mr. Halligan?
Oh, thank you. I just had a couple of questions.
Sure.
At the last bullet, under a major, I worked for a school year this year. It says, I'm, I'm, I'm the judge be advocating for, for a childcare space at LP Wilson. Do you have a space in mind for that currently?
I most certainly do. Room 18. Unfortunately, I think it's going to take a lot of work, but we would be very appreciative if we had that. Not only would we provide, have a decent space for childcare, but my idea is to split it in half and have the other side be another English as a second language. Because right now, my office is used as a, as a combination classroom. So I sit out in the hallway when that's being used as a classroom. So it would be really nice to have that other space. I'm glad you asked.
To follow up on that, is your vision like for the daycare or like a pre-K kind of program there for? But cares, I mean, I'm just kind of curious.
Right now, it's more for our students that are in classes during the day. If they have children, they can bring them there. But I think it would be a good idea if we did a pre-K and invite, you know, if we have the space, invite other community members. I know sometimes there's, there's a waiting list for the pre-K and why not? It'd be great.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Welcome back to our right. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I'd just like to thank you for all that you do. You already know, I greatly appreciate your work. And as I've said many times, I'm very big on building community, and that's what you do every day of your life with the goals you've accomplished and the goals you set to accomplish. I firmly believe that we should be supporting you as best we can because it's just what's best for the community. Understanding that the people that you serve in your capacity, they're often overlooked, but they also, they're, they're of our community and empowering them empowers our community and empowers our ability for our own community to be able to function. So I really appreciate all the work you do. And I am very radical about what I think adult education could be because I don't think it has to just be the courses that you guys are limited to. I believe that so much more can be done in just the idea of a continuing education class or even if students decide that they don't want to go to a four-year class, but there's some sort of trainings or some sort of certifications that they'd be able to receive in a, in a, something like what you provide. I think that that could be the kind of radical thinking and the revolutionary thinking that we could bring to Windsor to be able to really empower people to stay in Windsor and to build the community right here. Because there's a lot of help wanted signs out there and we haven't really quite figured out how to bridge that gap about keeping kids in Windsor and affording Windsor. So I think there's just so much that can be done through adult education that could help bridge that gap. So thank you for constantly going to people's jobs and talking to their managers and just all the small things and trying to figure out how, transportation, everything, just figuring out how to bridge the gap. Because in the end, those are the things that count the most and people will never forget it.
Thank you. And I want to thank Dr. Hill and Ms. Bachelder for all their support. It's, it, it's a wonderful program for Windsor and you guys should, you know, be proud of it. You also have to remember that these are the parents of the children that attend the schools. So we got to educate the whole family. And I welcome you to come visit anytime. I'm just down the hall.
Ms. Pounds?
Just give us a little, say, the must-complete totaling hour, coursework, coursework totaling at least 12 hours. So, and then they sit for the exam. Is this, is this right?
So in order for our students to get counted with the feds, they have to complete at least 12 hours. So a student that only attends 11 hours won't count as a student for us. As you, I, so the State Department of Ed makes a, negotiates with the federal government a certain percentage of goals that each, that the state has to have in adult ed, and that's tied to our funding. So, and, and it's measured by pre and post-testing also.
And how, and they do one hour, what, per, per time that they come here?
Our classes are two and a half hours and they run three times a week.
Oh, two, two and a half?
Three times, yep, two and a half, so seven hours.
It goes, it comes and goes quickly, is what you're saying?
Yep, so it's 12 weeks. Those students who aren't attending, we, we give them a call. Just check on them, make sure they're okay.
And I see what you had. You have this new leases program here, right?
It's beautiful.
You're texting.
Yes, we can text from it.
I see. So it's been a problem. But thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Fury?
Again, thank you for what you do and echoing Mr. Wallison's comments. I think it's a very important program. And I see you're also doing it with a 0% increase, which Mr. Panos really appreciates.
I'm happy to take money, though.
Fighting inflation.
And I think what was mentioned, there's often so many different manufacturing companies that all of a sudden put signs out. And how do we best connect not only CTE through, through Windsor High School, but how do we also connect those potential graduates or parents with students in the schools or just other adults who are in our community to those kind of job opportunities? And some places will train them at the site and others may want to see some additional skills. So it could be a very minimal cost to have certain skill set. But that does mean we really need to be talking to the community and the manufacturers and other businesses that are here of what are those skills that, that they're looking for. So thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Kolesky?
Yes, thank you. I have one other question, kind of piggybacking off of what Mr. Halligan asked. Because you're advocating for this childcare space, are you hoping to see it maybe move in that direction for the 2023-24 school year? Or are you hoping to just kind of get approval and then the following year to make that actually happen?
Be nice to get it next year, but I don't know.
So, yeah, we're very limited with space, like I've explained to the board. We're currently going on, in a contract with a firm to look at all of our space. We're also, you know, Dr. Hill and I were kind of touring Windsor and had some ideas. So we need space. So space, unfortunately, we have our elementaries busting at the seams. So, you know, our spark at LPW busting at the seams. So space is our issue. So to just keep that in mind for everybody.
So I guess, secondly, if that were to ever come to fruition, how would that be handled in the budget? Would it be handled here or in a different section of the budget?
So we would have to add that to major maintenance because when Library Connection, Library Connection left this building, we took over and assumed their rent. So we, in essence, paid the town for space for adult ed, so, and all of us. But that increased, increase went up. And so the more rooms we obtain, the more money we have to pay the town. But then, just to give you an example, to fix the one room we did for Maella was a little over $30,000 because it's, you have to bait the floors. It's all asbestos. But the problem with the room that she's referring to is it's actually a raised floor right now because it housed all of the electrical and computer. So there's a lot of, there's just a lot in that room to even begin to work on it. But we would, that would have to be an additional charge to the general fund budget. I don't think the town would give us that money.
Okay, just good to know where that money might end up going if it were to actually happen. So thank you, both.
Well, we know where to go fight for it, that's for sure. Any other questions? I heard 32 countries. That's awesome. How many languages does that, you support out of a pool of 32 countries?
I didn't print that one out, I'm sorry, but a lot. The great, the great thing is, is, you know, now with Google, you can translate it, including our registration form. You can translate it into any language. We also use Burlington English, which is great for the, our English as a second language. And if they're having an issue with a certain question, when we register them, we put their mother tongue as one of them. So when they have a question, the question will appear in their mother tongue. It's...
So, Dr. Hill, okay, we have that as a question for the packet. How many languages do we actually support in the school district, if possible? Yes. Thank you, sir.
Who do you want me to email that to? I'll go do it right now.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Darlene, did you have a question? Oh, okay. I saw you. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Recognizing Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Maella. Next, we're going to have from, excuse me, from Instructional Services, Dr. Haiti, our acting assistant superintendent for Instructional Services, and Ms. Feyman, our director of humanities.
Good evening.
So I would like to start by saying that we like to believe that Instructional Services... We like to believe that Instructional Services is the backbone of the district. We do everything, curriculum, instruction, teaching, and learning. So in our department, we take care of everything from curriculum development, curriculum revision, professional development, MTSS, BLC systems, building teachers' capacity. And we also have a team of wonderful instructional coaches that work in every single building. We have a STEM coach and a humanities coach in every building, as well as a STEM and a humanities supervisor at the high school. So we all work together to make sure that we have high-quality, research-based curriculum in front of every child in every classroom, as well as a highly effective teacher in front of every child in every classroom. The goals for the 2022-2023 school year are ongoing. So you probably will see the same goals at the nature of this department, since we work on curriculum. We are constantly looking at our curriculum, looking at our data, and making sure that, you know, our students are learning what we want them to learn and the data reflects... learn, and the data reflects that. So when the data does not reflect that, we go back and look, revise our curriculum, and make sure that it is aligned to the standards and to what we want our kids to be able to know and do. So developing curriculum is an ongoing goal, working on improving our system. So MTSS is our multi-tiered system of support, as well as our professional learning communities, our PLCs, which are our teacher teams, once they get together to look at student data, look at curriculum, and builds our capacity in terms of teaching. Developing and retaining school leaders, as well as teachers, and our support staff, and fostering a positive learning environment that supports high-quality teaching and learning. We've been doing a lot of work this year, and I think you've heard from all the principals last Tuesday about a data culture. So we're trying to build a data culture in the district where teachers, the norm is to look at student data on a daily basis and adjust instruction, adjust curriculum, adjust everything that we do in order to make sure that every child is getting what he or she needs. So we've implemented a data talks structure where we meet on a regular basis, a team of school administrators, central office administrator, as well as, we meet with every single teacher in the district. We go over their student data. We talk about strengths, challenges, support, and how we can move forward. We, we use MTSS and PLC, the frameworks, in order to be able to do the work that we do in data talks. So this is some of the time that teachers use to look at data and to decide what kind of tiered support different students need. And we also, we're currently working on aligning our professional development system in the district to align with everything else. So the, the goal is that we have an entire system where everything is aligned from teacher professional development, MTSS systems, PLC systems, everything is aligned, and everything is driven by student data. So that we are, at the end of the day, we're making sure that we're getting kids where they need to be by the end of the year. Some of the major work for next year, again, like I said, all our work is ongoing. So continue to develop standard-based curricula, provide professional development and coaching support for our teachers, to make sure that we're building our capacity, and continuing to monitor teaching and learning. And we do that through looking at student data, doing our walkthroughs. Again, that's a district-wide system that was recently implemented last year, where we do walkthroughs using a unified form across all our buildings. So every single administrator, coach that does a walkthrough uses the same form. And then we have all this data dump into like a dashboard. That way, anyone can easily look at our data and identify areas that we need to work on. So that's an ongoing goal as well for next year. And then develop processes to measure progress and determine whether interventions have had a positive impact on students' achievement and behaviors. So we do provide students with different interventions. Now we're really honing in to make sure that we have a follow-up system to make sure that the intervention that was provided is actually doing what we meant it for it to do. And we'll take questions.
Thank you very much. I will start to my left this time. Ms. Kulinski?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So on the actual budget from like the financial perspective, I know last year we took out any funds related to Northwest Park, and then this upcoming year, we're putting them back in. Did we actually, are we forecasted to spend any money on Northwest Park this year? Or can I just get a little bit more information regarding that? Because I actually don't know what those funds are for.
So actually, so last year, we did take the funds out, but the field trips still happened. And that was through different grants. So some of our teachers have written on the WEF grants, which are through the Windsor Education Association. And we also get different small grants from different places that teachers were able to use to do those field trips. So I think we, we wanted to put back the money just in case it is a wonderful program that we don't want to see go anywhere. So we just put the money in there in case we're not able to get these grants, so that we can still support, you know. But if we don't use them, we always have other needs in other areas.
You know, I think it's a wonderful program, great for those kids to be able to use it. So I was happy to see the money back in there, and I was curious how we were funding it this current year. So thank you. And then, secondly, just, this is my last question. I love saving money. I think the town likes that, too. But can you give a little bit more context as to how we're reducing the textbook and new equipment? And how, because that, that's quite a substantial decrease.
So for textbooks, usually textbooks are, is a huge item. We are not foreseeing that we're going to need to purchase textbooks. So we do develop our own curriculum in district. And then we provide teachers with a lot of resources to support our curriculum. So textbooks, in terms of buying every child a textbook, is not something that we foresee doing for next year. So that's why we were able to decrease it. The previous year, some of our courses, like at the high school, for example, AP Statistics, for example, needed a textbook. So that was in last year's budget. So when we look at what upcoming projects are in for next year, we saw that we don't really have a need for purchasing any textbooks.
Can I add one thing, if it's helpful? The, a lot of textbooks are really offered digitally now. And the beauty of that is not just the cost is significantly lower in a lot of cases, but they update them frequently. So when you order textbooks the old-fashioned way, especially for us, like in the humanities, our US history, a US history textbook from 10 years ago is not going to be adequate. Then we're ordering books at over $100 apiece, again, to, to, you know, basically update what we have. But with a lot of the options digitally now, they will update them even as frequently as once a month. Like Discovery Education updates their techbooks for history and social studies almost monthly. So you get updated content, and it's a lot cheaper, and we don't have to worry about students losing the books, damaging the books, and having to repay for very expensive textbooks. So it's a nice option.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right. Shift them back to my left. Mr. Fury?
Thank you. Got a question on student activities. Again, the amount is being reduced from 20,000 to 15,500, and looking to probably, probably Danielle versus anybody else, or, or Noha. Every time I see robotics, I, I don't like to see decrease.
Leonard.
You should recuse yourself.
Sure it wouldn't be taken from robotics, buddy.
I'm just gonna, you know, say one thing. And then, so a lot of our student activities, so if it's happening at the building level, buildings have a line item for student activities. So a lot of times, you know, it goes through the building first. And then if they cannot support it, then it comes to Instructional Services. So I think we, you know, in, in most cases, we find that the money in student activities does not really get spent all the way down. So, you know, buildings do kind of play a part in some of the student activities.
She hit it on the head. And the number one is robotics.
And I, I know Mr. Lockhart wasn't going to want to see that it was coming from the firefighter corps.
Nope, that's a good one.
So we were going to be fighting on whose, whose cut is coming here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Panos and then Ms. Taylor.
First, oh, the one who answered the phone is left. All right.
I could try to answer.
No, I was just looking at the magnet school tuition. I wonder, that's just a 13.69% increase. That's probably the largest item that we have, is the only increase here. The others are reduced. It's just, that's just, you get an estimate now, or do they give you their prices? How do they work, I mean, with these magnet schools? They, you know, that's a, you know, it's a couple of hun, what is it? A couple hundred thousand dollar increase.
I think we're told of the, what they're expecting for us to pay in advance. And there's also some formulas based on the previous increases that we can use.
Okay, so this is an estimate on your part. This is not a number that they gave you?
We will get tuition bills at the beginning of the school year, but it is an estimate. And in the past few years, they've gone up significantly. So the magnet and charter schools are billing us a greater amount for tuition. That's why we're seeing that increase.
Well, I guess I can look at it. It actually went down the previous two.
Yeah. So the magnet school, I wanted to actually bring this to your attention last week. So if you flip to page...
Do we have a reduction in enrollment? I don't think so.
Nope. So if you flipped to page 1F, sorry, 1G, next one over, you'll see that, so the Hartford magnets are the magnets up top on the sheet that we do not pay for. That is state-funded. The Krec magnets are what we pay for. And as you can see, we're actually lower...
1G.
We have less kids this year than last year, yet we're $280,000 in the hole for this year already.
Yeah, it's the last page.
Oh.
Yes.
I don't know the alphabet.
I don't have a G.
There's a new alphabet.
So the majority of these tuitions is, is coming from Krec, correct?
Yes. So overall, we have less kids going to magnet this year than last year. But that's the increase solely from Krec this year. It's roughly, when I looked at all the bills, it's roughly $1,000 more for every kid, every student.
So Krec has been very vocal about that during the Krec councils. They've been upside down in their form, in their funding, what the state's been giving them. And they've been letting, supporting districts know upfront that they, they can no longer absorb the losses, and that they were going to be charging the districts more of their share of sending students to their schools. So this was not something that was just overnight. This was something probably two or three years in the making. And unfortunately, the CGA has not fully funded Krec the way they should be funded, and it's become being a burden on the local districts.
Maybe they should stop moving their schools.
Okay, so I, I will, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm gonna, I'm not, I'm gonna make sure that all of Mr. Panos's questions are answered first, and then I will allow every board member to be able to put that on the row. Absolutely.
Well, if, if it's in reference to this item, I think it's appropriate for them to comment if it's on this item.
If you yield, because I want to make sure you get everything you want answered first.
I feel that the level of education that we provide here in Windsor Public Schools is, is excellent. And I, I hope that Krec is responsible with their state and federal funding to make sure that they are not charging taxpayer dollars to substantiate what they do with the money when they should be focusing on educating our children and not building beautiful buildings to educate our children. Was that nice?
Yes. And I, Mr. Panos, if you were...
I approve of what she just said.
Mr. Panos, plus one. Mr. Panos.
Boutique schools.
There's, there's two other comments that support or to speak to what you were speaking to. So I'm gonna go down the, I'm gonna go down the row.
I would like to say, especially when those schools are surely after shutdown, it just doesn't make much sense to me.
Ms. Clay?
Additionally, there are other services that we pay for to support students in the Krec school systems, like special education services. So I think they should take to all of that into consideration when they consider the charge that we pay to send our students to a district that is not equal to what Windsor's is.
So to piggyback off Ms. Clay, so within our, so I know we'll get to special ed tuition, and that number is that number. But the tuition, the magnet school enrollment tuition is actually a 100,000 to 1 point, excuse me, 1.2 of that is strictly special ed students, above and beyond the normal cost of just going to the school. That's what they charge above and beyond that.
Okay. So, would you like to, is this a piggyback? Because I want to make sure I can go back to Mr. Panos.
Yes, thank you.
So I'll, I'll go to Ms. Panter, and then Mr. Fury.
I'm in 100% agreement with all of you. I don't need pretty, as I told everybody last time, or the previous meeting, I'm all about education, and I want deep, strong education. It doesn't have to look beautiful, a school, a beautiful parking lot. It needs to be, you know, you need to be able to be safe in it and drive in it, but it doesn't need all of these facial improvements like the other schools. And I'm looking at the education. And I think Windsor has a lot to offer compared to a lot of other schools. Thank you.
Mr. Fury?
And this is related to this discussion, but I want to make sure I understand. Again, Mr. Panos pointed out that a 13.69% increase. And if we look at the 2022-23 budget, did we under-budget from what, what's happening? So are we currently gonna exceed that amount for this year of 1460?
Correct. Yeah, so that's in our, yeah, so.
So you're, you're gonna be able, I assume, as you always give us an update, at some point, we're gonna have to add money to that item from another part. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Panos, we're back to you, sir.
Thank you. Explain a little bit more about this, or you mentioned the data, daily data. That sounds like a lot of data to be, you know, you, you went through this, you said you do daily updates on the data, and in order to, to get better, it sounds like an extreme amount of monitoring. Let me just put it that way.
So it's not daily. It's data talks. It's every, about every six weeks.
I thought you said daily, you update, you would move to, to looking at data on a daily basis. I must have misunderstood.
So we're building the culture. So our data talks happens every between six to eight weeks. However, when that becomes a culture, teachers look at their own data on a daily basis, which they should, in order to be able to plan instruction that is well-aligned to their kids' needs. So that, teachers do on their own as they plan every day. They look at what kids need. So that is some kind of a data. But the data talks that I was talking about happens about every, between every six to eight weeks, where we meet with the teachers.
Oh, okay. I didn't, okay, I, I see. It's all done with, it's done with the teacher. You know, it just sounded, the way you put it, it almost sounded like you, that you and Ms. Feyman just look at the data every single day and give them the redirect.
We do. I, I do have a spreadsheet that I monitor.
I'm looking at it right now, actually.
Well, you know, there is a certain value to, you know, allowing a teacher, you know, I don't know, it sounds like a very highly scripted, in the way you described it, highly scripted way of teaching, you know, which, you know, is not, you know, conducive to, let's say, the creativity of the teacher. So I don't know if that's, I don't know if you're moving or not.
No.
Recognizing Dr. Hill?
The instruction is not highly scripted. So I want to clarify, so the public is clear, because it could be thought that way. But again, this is part of my vision of establishing the culture. We say in lots of educational environments that, you know, we use data to make our decisions. And you have all these people who sell us on everything, data-driven decision-making, you know. And we know that the reality is, like, most staff across the nation in education don't look at the data to make real-time decisions. It's usually big chunks, like end of year, end of a semester, and you just kind of see, say, oh, wow, these kids didn't do this, they didn't do that. But Dr. Haiti and Ms. Feyman, in working with their coaches and working with the administrators at the schools, you know, we're, we're starting to get to the point where teachers are looking at their specific data for their students, and it's informing their instruction. No one's taking away their ability to instruct. But instructing is not a free-for-all, you just walk in a room and make stuff up. Okay? There is a script to teaching, even with the artistic form of teaching. You know what my student needs, and so you design your lessons based on what the curriculum is, and based on what, who, you know, who you have in front of you. So they're not scripted in, in the sense that you teach page six this day, page, you know, seven this day. I've, I've seen those systems. But they are teaching what... I've seen those systems, but they are teaching what's needed to be taught and making the adjustments that are needed based on the data that's in front of them. So if you see a student, for example, struggling in algebraic expressions, you may have to spend, you say, well, I'm ready to move on to numerancy or something else, right? You may have to spend a little bit more time with that student or give that particular student extra work, but you should note that.
So this is more personalized, we're just saying, that the teacher will give more personalized instruction to the various students.
I don't want to tell you something that is a catch-all, Mr. Panos, because I don't, I don't want to just make that sound that way. It's teaching, it's the way teaching should happen. You look at information, your teachers did it, you just didn't know it. So if you didn't pass, if the teacher teaches a particular topic for the week, right? And we all come from that era, because everybody, well, maybe not, Mr. Wolison, we're all old enough. You took your test on Fridays, right? Test was always on Friday. Like, you could do nothing else on a Friday but take a test, so couldn't test on a Monday, huh? So you take your test on Friday, teachers at home on the weekend, because of course, teachers grade papers on the weekends, and they go, wow, like, more than half my class did not pass this test. That data tells the teacher, I need to re-instruct on that particular topic. Even though, you know, a little less than half passed, more than half did not. So on Monday, the teacher is not just saying, hey, more than half you guys did not pass. The teacher is going, we're gonna go back into this because clearly you guys didn't get this. And so that's using the data to inform your instruction.
Okay, I didn't realize that was that new, but anyway.
It's not new, it's actually an old thing that it's back again.
Okay. And is that what you mean with developed processes to measure, that bottom bullet item under, for the new year? Develop processes to measure progress and determine whether interventions have a positive impact on student learning and behaviors?
Yes, so that's, it all works together, so when a child gets intervention, we use a certain intervention system or strategy. Then after a couple of weeks of receiving that intervention, we look at a progress monitoring, which is basically an assessment to see if the child was able to grow from the intervention that was given or not, and then we'll look at this data to say, oh, this intervention is working, so we're gonna continue. Or no, this intervention is not working, the kid is not going anywhere, so let's try a different strategy. So that is the system that we're developing to make sure that every child that goes through an intervention, we have a system of measuring and evaluating if the intervention is working or not.
Now, how widespread is the need for this at the elementary versus the secondary level?
It's, it's a system that is needed K-12, so it might, the numbers might be different from elementary to, you know, at a K-2 school, we might have less kids who need intervention because they have less years to have a gap. So like, if you're in first grade, you only have one year below level to be behind, right? But if you are in middle school, you might be a sixth grader or a seventh grader who's in a fourth grade level. So you've got so many, so much more grades to catch up on, so the intervention needs might be different from building to building, but it's definitely needed in all buildings.
Thank you.
All set, Ms. Panos?
Yes.
All right, anyone else? Ms. Clay?
I just think we have great schools, but I just want to say that I think this department is, just does a particularly great job in what you do, and I'm really impressed with our curricula and the supports that we provide, and I really am amazed by the professionalism and the care that, the work that you do every day, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Ms. Clay, you said exactly what I was gonna say, so what I'm gonna say is ditto. We truly appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, recognizing Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Dr. Haiti, thank you, Ms. Feynman. At this time, we're going to have Ms. Katrina Wicks, Director of Information and Technology, and Mr. Kevin Moriarty, Manager of Information Systems, come forward to present the technology budget.
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, thank you. Hi, so we're gonna talk about technology, so what does the technology department do? Well, we support all systems in the district. We're an essential component of curriculum and the work in instructional services to, you know, develop, provide opportunities for learning for all students, whether it's critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity skills, while simultaneously strengthening attributes such as persistence and leadership. And then the department also provides critical infrastructure, from broadband devices and policy recommendations to digital content and instructional support for both staff and students to further teaching, learning, assessment, accountability, leadership, and a culture with a focus on equity. So to date.
22-23 school year, we implemented recommendations from the federal government on Cyber Security Act to better protect our staff and student data, support person professional development and other data, student data sources and performance matters platform. Better provide, like we just talked about, to make sure that the teachers have the right data that they can view each day. We also continually align our technology and contracted services to district priorities to look for efficiencies and streamline services and enhance network and data security. Towards our goals to date, following recommendations based on cybersecurity, we've implemented staff training and so on, trained all administrators and classroom teachers with appropriate support staff on assessing, collecting, and analyzing data and performance matters platform. We continue to align core technology and contracted services to better, to district priorities to seek efficiencies, streamline processes, and enhance network and data security.
And then for our major work for '23 and '24, we're gonna support the development and retention of exemplary school staff by building out a more comprehensive online learning platform for onboarding and continuing education of our staff. And again, we're going to continue to align our core technology and contracted services to district priorities. We're gonna ensure district-wide instructional technologies such as Chromebooks, iPads, smartboards are properly maintained, and our staff is getting the proper training on the use of the hardware and software. And we're gonna review and organize, if needed, technology, staff roles, and responsibilities to ensure that instructional technology coaching is taking place across the district to maximize the use of technology to drive effective instruction. To that end, you're gonna notice that our budget increased. This is not an area where we had a decrease, but there was an increase, and let me explain where the increase came from. Since like the early to mid-2000s, up through COVID, and actually during COVID, we have been in what I would call a building phase in terms of our technology infrastructure. So whether that's, you know, wiring, making connections between buildings, increasing our internet bandwidth, devices, you know, for every student and most, and many staff members, projection systems in all of the classrooms, we've been in a building phase. But now we're at the point where we have to maintain that infrastructure. And teachers and staff expect a certain level of technology access to do the work in the district. It really is now where if you don't have internet and you don't have stuff, you don't have technology in the district, people go, what do I do? How do I function? So technology is part of the fabric of our everyday work that we do in the district. From everything, from our HVAC systems, lighting, phones, to all of our classroom work, it's all, it's all technology. So this increase is part of that maintenance. So Kevin and I made a list of like all of our, especially like our equipment, like all of, like every smartboard, you know, all of the flat panel displays, desktop computers. We said, okay, how much do we have, and what will be the cost to roll this forward and to maintain this? And so we came up with some really big numbers. And instead of the budget being very, like having highs and lows, which is how we purchased, we ended up purchasing things originally, we're trying to flatten that out so every year, this number is more stable for you. So you see, like, you know, kind of like, here's the cost of maintaining these services rather than being in a building phase and having highs and lows and extremes in the technology budget.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I did have a question on the district's security training. So you said you do that once a year, or in it?
Before you go down that path, Ms. Clay, I just want to make sure that I understand the nature of your questioning. So if it's something relating to our plans or infrastructure of such, I've been advised that has to be discussed in executive session, so I want to be very careful how we word this.
No, it's in relation to security training and licenses, licenses, security, like cybersecurity, not anything to do with safety security.
Talking about like phishing?
Yeah, like phishing, teaching staff about phishing, email scams, like what to click on, what not.
If it's, if it's limited to that, I will allow that, but anything more in-depth than that, it would have to be in the executive session per advice.
Yeah, no, it's, you can tell me when it is if you want, before I, if they answer.
After you blow it off.
No, 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 I just want to make sure I'm very careful what we say in public, I want to be very careful, so I won't allow you to answer that.
So the only reason I'm asking is, I'm a state employee, and we have, we have our own security online training package, right? And it's a monthly training class that we have to take on some topic. But it's actually very effective, and so I didn't, and it's, I'm sure there's a licensure cost to it, so I didn't know if you've probably, if you've looked into some of those packages, or you have.
Yes, and actually, if you look at down, like where it says for major '23-24 work, we've already, we're in the first bullet, it says, "Support the development retention of exemplary school staff by building out a more comprehensive online learning platform." We knew that we wanted to add in more security training for our staff, so we, Kevin and I, we started shopping last year and said, okay, what are our options, and can we take, this is part of the streamlining of services, like, do we need to sign on to another company to get this kind of training for our staff? Or can we kind of do some of the compliance and the security training, and then also our onboarding of staff? Like, when you come new into the district, you don't just have to, you know, get a stack of textbooks for your classroom. Well, you have to learn how to, you know, you need to learn how to use your badge, how to, like, sign up for the copier, how to use the phone. So we're trying to get all of those pieces in one place to help with the onboarding of training for all technology, and even not just technology, but just what is the Windsor way of working with students, you know, in the district? How does the district work? So this is kind of in its, the security part was the first part, or kind of the impetus for this exploration. But we also want to streamline services and make sure we're not overspending for the training of our staff. So we're very excited about the potential for the platform that we did select to kind of build out all kinds of training for our staff.
That's great news, thank you. Can I ask one more question?
The floor is yours, Ms. Clay.
I would just like to put a plug in for next year's budget to think about supporting classroom instruction in cybersecurity to set our students on a path for maybe a career that's up and coming and highly engaging for many people. So not that you would have to be in charge of that, but you know, you might advocate for that. Thank you.
Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. I was just wondering how often you swap out the Chromebooks and iPads? Is it done every year, or every, must be every year at least?
Both Chromebooks and iPads, they do expire. Google sets a limit of six years for a Chromebook, so once it expires, it will still work, but it won't get any security updates that come out. So at that time, you know, usually we take them out of the students' hands, and we have other uses for them, but not particularly on a day-to-day basis. iPads are a little sooner than that, and we do the best we can with what we got.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, but that's part of that plan of replacement. So, yeah, like, okay, when is this batch of Chromebooks going to expire? And so that's when we, you know, we try to smooth that out, that replacement schedule.
Thank you.
Panos?
Yeah, just probably a similar question here, if I look at '21-22, it's 161,000, and then it's almost doubled, 313, and then it's almost doubled again to 678, do we expect another doubling?
I don't know what to expect, but I'm gonna tell you, we want to replace.
You know, or is it, or are we just taking care of a couple of bubbles here in the last couple of years?
Exactly, yeah, because those were kind of down years, we were using equipment, actually in the COVID, when we handed out devices.
Oh, yeah.
We had devices that were going to be decommissioned that were still usable and still, you know, had life to them, so we gave those out. So you're actually looking at '21-22 as being a lull year in purchasing? And we had to, and actually, that same year, when we bought 12, 2,400 Chromebooks back in 2015, those had now become expired, so those had to be replaced, so now you're seeing a little increase in the Chromebooks purchasing. And so that's where that's coming from, is because the whole, like, 2,000 of them, all of a sudden were no good.
And also, also, that year, '21-22, we were receiving the initial ESTER funding for technology specifically, so that number is really not a real number for our tech department because we received all those grants.
And in addition, you're talking about this, this, like, the doubling. If you look at some of the pricing, like, right now, we are, we're facing, we need to replace some smartboard and projector technology in our schools. At originally that pricing, like, if you went back several years ago, we could outfit a classroom for $2,500 to $3,000. Now the replacement cost is about five grand per classroom, so just the cost for replacement technology. And you can't really replace like with like, because of course, now we're up to 4K and everything else, but there's a charge, it's, it's, you can't replace it at the same level as we did, as we installed it.
Okay, but this is, this is not because of some major, this is a replacement largely.
No.
And you would expect that after that, not really gonna double after that unless some major.
Kind of expect it to kind of level out a little.
Right.
And we also had an increase in the licenses, you know, could you give us, normally they give us a list. Could you give us that list?
So I did not, and it was because of what we were talking about with everything else. When we give you the list of all of our vendors, you know, people can look at that and know who we contract with for certain things.
It's just us, we're trustworthy.
I know, but it's a public.
It's gonna be a public document.
Document.
You mean the price we pay for, for software is?
No, who we're, yeah, who we're paying, not what we're paying, who, the contractor. The vendor.
Why would that be?
What happens is you, not only you're trying to not put a bullseye on your contractors as being vulnerable, so the way to get to us is not to go through our network, but the way to get to us is go through our contractors that have, that are connected to our network, so we don't want to publicize who we work with.
You mean because we might get a cheaper price from somebody else?
No.
So to your point, this came out last year because I was the villain that asked them to cut their budget by $120,000, because I thought it was too high. I think we remember that discussion, and then out of that discussion, we discovered that if we make these things public, we could probably put the district in more harm's way with this stuff being public. So that was discussed last year, and if we have to revisit that discussion, I'm open to that discussion through the president for us to have that, but it was clearly laid out. But it was clearly laid out to us why we don't do that, so that we don't put the vendors against each other. More importantly, we don't get our stuff held, for my expression, my expression, hostage.
But I will add that every year, every renewal, we do shop around and look for the best price. Sometimes, you know, switching vendors for a best price may be more expensive than it's worth.
Cheaper is not always better.
Right, so you have to, you have to understand man-hours in implementing a new system and training everybody on it as opposed to saving just a few bucks.
This is, this is getting to be a big item, and I think, you know, it's something that should, the board should look at and try to understand anyway.
Just in terms of our costs for our contracted services, just as a result of just some of our discussions from the past few years, where we really scrutinized that list of vendors and the list of services, I feel like at this point, we are, we're down to, like, we've got core vendors that we work with. And in some cases, we buy multiple products with some of these vendors, like, for example, Power School. Power School, we have not only our Power School registration and enrollment, they've also bought up some additional products. They are made, there are, you know, most schools in Connecticut have them as their student information system. They are also like the Performance Matters vendors, so the vendor that, where we store all of our student assessment data that, you know, Dr. Haiti was talking about. So there, they've like, there's like four or five products just that are Power School. And I'm gonna tell you, it doesn't get cheaper every year. Their prices go up every year, just even the projection for next year. If you just look at our total Power School dollar amount, and I just had a discussion with the vendor the other day, 12.7% up next year. So, and that's not just one vendor.
That's all of them.
All of them go up. So even if we expect the same level of service. So I don't like seeing the number go up either, but it's just, and I'm not even sure shopping around makes it cheaper, as Kevin mentioned. Like eggs.
Well, I mean, I hope this isn't like, you know, special ed tuition, special ed tuition.
Well, Mr. Panos, I hate to break it to you. This number will continue to go up. This is something we can't control. We have, it's because we have to pay it. That's just not even software, that's the hardware, that's the backbone, that's securing the Wi-Fi, that's securing the hard lines, that's securing the fact that if we have to back up our systems just in case there's a catastrophic failure, we have to back up our system just in case someone hijacks our data lines and stuff like that. We have to be able to recover our data, that if we contract systems to use, they can hijack our data for payment. I mean, we have to be in a position where we have to protect every single bit of data we are entrusted with. And I don't like this number. I'm with you, Mr. Panos, on this one. This is a very high number, but you know what? It's the cost of doing business. And this 1.8, you thought I was very angry about the 1.4 that came last year, and we got it down to 134. This 1.8 could easily go to 2, 2.2 within the next two years because you have to keep upgrading the hardware and keep maintaining the systems. It's something we just cannot avoid. If we want to be an ethical school system that's going to protect everything, because we got VLANs that's protecting everything from fire to phones to camera systems to everything. These HVAC systems, these are all on the networks, and they all go through servers, and it's all automated. And if we have any catastrophic failure, or if there's a Daisy chain failure, or if there's a Trojan horse that goes in and just downs, just downs our whole district, that, it would be catastrophic. And then we would be sitting looking at Dr. Hill, asking him the difficult questions on how we allow him to have, allow that to happen. And then he's gonna look at it and say, well, you did not support what I asked you for. And he would have every right to do so.
Well, if a percent increase is too high to believe, then it's not gonna happen. You can't continue to go up at 15% a year. Just do the math. It's not sustainable. So there's, obviously, it has to come a reckoning in all these licenses and all that sort of thing. I mean, after all, we depend upon technology. The big promise was it's gonna make everything cheaper, not more expensive.
No, 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 sir. Dr. Hill, I got you, it make everything more efficient. They didn't say cheaper.
You can do calculations much more cheaply.
He didn't say cheaper, he said he more efficiently.
Oh, ah. I need, you need some, you need some PD, I think.
So I'm gonna recognize Dr. Hill and then Mr. Fury.
Thank you. I agree with you, Mr. Panos. I just want to be clear so the public can hear. I have asked Katrina and Kevin to, like, you know, I would say, find me the best product and find me a cheaper price. But they're the experts in that area, not me. They'll come back during the research, they'll present the information to me. And I do understand that cheaper is not always going to be better, or it's not always actually cheaper because a lot of people do the, I call it the bait and switch. They get you in on a nice low price, you know, like a trial, you know, like all these streaming services, right? For a seven-day trial for $5, and then it's $100 a month. So we are trying, but what also happened, you know, think about it, like, I know Ms. Taylor jokingly but seriously said eggs. Everyone's cleaning up off the pandemic, right? They are cleaning up off the pandemic. So companies pivoted when they saw school systems and businesses go from virtual, I mean, from in-person to virtual. So they know, and now companies and schools and the like are no longer fully trusting the in-person operations. The world has gone hybrid, if I could use a better term. So that means they're always hedging their bet that they are going to be back in a virtual situation again. Companies know this. So even companies that weren't necessarily, as Ms. Wick said, Power School buying up. So, and that's, that's what they're doing. The big companies are monopolizing because they know that schools will only use certain products. They need certain products. So the big companies, they just buy up the smaller folks. And they know we're never going to escape using the computers ever again. We are definitely slaves to it now. I never heard the cheaper one, I can't say I've heard that. I did hear computers are gonna make our lives easier, more efficient.
Let me give you an example.
They, but they are, we're just wed to the technology at this point.
Okay, we just heard from Ms. Feynman and Ms. Haiti about the updating of the textbooks automatically much more cheaply. Now, that's an example of the use of, so that's what I mean. I mean, you can do, if you're gonna gather all the data of all the students, you can just put this all on one thing. This is the way we thought, this is much, much cheaper than having a whole bunch of people do it. So, you know, I have to disagree with the general, I agree the monopolizing is going on. And we heard at Cabe Convention about, you know, all the costs that are gonna be, you know, added for, you know, when they, when they go into this full mode for everybody being able to take, you know, classes at a distance and all that sort of thing. So, you know, I kind of, I'm trying to understand this, you know. We, all I'm saying is that we cannot sustain, you know, 15% increases year over year. That's not gonna happen.
So, no, we cannot, we cannot. So what's going to happen, so the public needs to hear, if you look at that line, the line that's carrying the most, you're not talking about a 15% increase in the contracted services or the license.
100% agree.
The biggest piece you're talking about is the equipment. So what's gonna happen is we're gonna have to decide that at a certain point, we're not gonna upgrade our equipment as readily as we, as we are used to doing.
I think what they said is they're gonna, we're gonna, this is a, this is a renewal of a bunch of equipment that we've had for a number of years, right? This is, the equipment costs are gonna.
May I just have a chance at this? So, so I, because I, I don't, this amount is not gonna increase this much each year. It's not going to. What the technology team has done was take all of our inventory, map it all out on our lovely Excel spreadsheets because of technology, and literally tracked, when do things expire? You know, third grade get new ones, so that means when they enter seventh, they're gonna get new ones. They mapped it all out so we don't have these huge peaks and then these huge valleys. This 678,000 will sustain us if we continue to budget this amount, not cut it like we did CIP or major maintenance 10 years ago. If we continue to fund at this level, then we'll be steady. And that's what they're trying to do. What?
I'll hold you to that word next year.
Mr. Fury?
Okay.
Does that mean you've decided to run again?
No, 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 I'll be honest.
You'll be in the audience, right.
I'll be worse.
You'll be calling in virtually.
And Zoom doesn't go down either, every year either. There's always an increase.
That one, I'm dead.
Mr. Fury?
Oh, my goodness. On the licenses, that, which didn't go up as high a percentage, are, can you at least tell us, are most of the increase in that line item for higher prices? So we're not getting a lot of new things or?
The majority of that is one addition.
One, okay. And then others could be a price increase.
Small increases, yep, renewals.
You mean in the licenses?
Yeah.
Only one new addition.
And on the equipment, is that something, or is that the same, that's the same thing? That would be something we would need both the licenses and equipment if we got those to be shown in executive session?
It would be, I would imagine so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I hear that you have an inventory sheet, so we know exactly what we have on hand throughout the whole district, and we know what can be refreshed, what can be shipped out for trade-in value. You have all of that documented.
Correct.
I'm a happy person. Thank you very much. All right, so it is 7:46. Thank you. So at 7:46, we're gonna take a recess, and we're gonna reconvene at 8 o'clock. Please be back in your chair by 8 o'clock. We will start with or without you at 8 o'clock.
He's so nasty, huh?
No, we have until 9 o'clock.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Listen, anybody wants to go home.
I didn't hear any objections.
So is this term of child fine obligation then a special ed just phrase that's a formal?
It's part of the IDEA and special education law.
So it's a formal term, okay, I'm sorry.
All set, Ms. Pennell?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Pennell? Look back to my left. Without objection, we can move on to the next slide. So, order, Dr. Hill?
Fill me.
I had said she was gonna cover six and seven.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the second half of the department really is, really our special education teachers, our paraeducators, the staff that are providing that specialized instruction for our students in the math, the reading, the writing, executive functioning skills, organization. And we really do that through a continuum of services. So we have students in the general education setting, we have students who need more restrictive settings within our own district, and then students we even outplace. So, again, I had mentioned, we have had a lot of new staff, and so a big chunk of our school year this year has really been building their capacity and then improving the climate of our department in order to hopefully retain more staff. Special education and our students at times can be challenging, and I think it's hard to keep staff working because there is that kind of feeling of, you know, being a little bit burnt out or not being able to continue because it can be at times emotionally draining. So we've implemented staff academies in the evenings, we do those once a month from four to six on a Thursday, and we address different topics where our staff can voluntarily come and learn or improve their understanding of different special education topics. So, the last one we did a few weeks ago, we talked about extended school year, explaining what it is, how students qualify, and so it just gives us another opportunity. Again, our special education coach has worked with our new staff at length in order to onboard them and provide them support in areas that we see are needed. And so, we do have a lot of staff that are fairly new out of school, if not, you know, this is their first year out, so the level of need has been great, and we understand that after one year of teaching, you're not a master, so we want to make sure that we are focusing this year and on to ensure those staff have that support. Kind of, in conjunction with the staff turnover, we've had programs in district historically that have allowed us to educate special populations, students who might have more significant behavioral needs, students who might require discreet trial instruction. Because of some of the changes in staffing, we had established programs in various buildings, and when staff has left, we've had to kind of rebuild those programs. So a lot of our work this year has been to recruit staff for our specialized programs, train those staff that are working with those special populations. We've had some people consulting with our teams in order to give feedback on what we're doing in those programs, and this is an area that we definitely need to continue to improve. It is hard to find staff for the programs, and therefore, you know, we really need to find those strong individuals that want to be working with those specific populations. One of the bane's of my existence this year has been our switch to the CT-Seds platform. So in years past, we have had a computer system called IEP Direct that would house all of our documents, our staff would write up their PPT meetings, collect their data, do everything in IEP Direct. The state mandated that we roll out a new system that they bought and are requiring all of us to utilize. The state did not have, in my opinion, the strongest rollout plan, so it was hard for us to take a program we didn't know a great deal about and then have to roll it out to our staff. However, we spent a lot of time creating professional development, having office hours, creating our own help desk system so that we can roll out this platform and get our students into the new system, and we've been very successful. We have over 700 PPT meetings that have now been written up in the system, and I think everyone was pulling out their hair because it was a challenge to switch. But I do think our staff is now doing really well with the new system, and we're far ahead of other districts in the state, because we kind of took a pull the Band-Aid off approach, and we, you know, said, "We're using it, we're all in, and we're gonna start from day one," and it was hard for staff, but we're so much ahead because we've had that practice since September, and our staff don't have to hold specific meetings that are required more than once, just to hold them once and then a second time to get them into the system. And I included, again, our, the nights we're doing for the parents, they've been, the feedback has been really good, you know, we're trying to, different facets, to really kind of get the word out that we're doing the nights, and we actually have one coming up on Thursday of this week at Windsor High School for parents of kids sixth grade and older to talk about transition. So what are the services available once you leave school, whether it's the DDS or DEMIS, the Bureau of Rehabilitation Services, and also having our parents start conversations about what does college look like for someone with a disability? And so we're hosting a night, like I said, Thursday at Windsor High School, and we will continue to increase the number of those parent nights so that we can have parents who understand special education, the law, and the systems in place, so they can better advocate and support their students. Some of the other just kind of work that I wanted to touch upon, the law changed this year, and we have to require, or we have to implement 18 hours of professional development for our paraeducators. We have always included them in our early release when it was appropriate and have planned some professional development for them on the days where they have to work, but we don't have school. We've really tightened up that process this year. We have a paraeducator professional development committee that gives us feedback as far as what the paras themselves think that they need more professional development on, and then we also look at not, the jobs of two paras are not alike always, so we want to give them a lot of choices so that they can attend professional development that's meaningful to the job they do. A para in the preschool may be doing a very different day-to-day job than a para at Windsor High School in, say, a social studies class. And I think I kind of covered it. Moving forward, we want to continue to enhance the coaching sessions we do with our staff, so we focus so much on our new staff that we feel like we really have to, now that they're onboarded and we're in a better place, do some more coaching with some of our veteran staff in areas that we feel that they could use some more support. It's gonna be a big emphasis to give our general ed and special ed teachers more time to collaborate. We're trying to figure out ways where special ed staff can still learn, like legal updates, but then also be able to participate in professional development along with their general education peers so that they can be looking at data together, they can be talking about that data, making changes to instruction, and really having a more collaborative approach. So what are some ways where we can do some of our special education work at different times so we give our staff more opportunities? And we've talked this year about really implementing more co-teaching at the elementary level, which, you know, has definitely budgetary implications in the fact that in order to do it well, we need, you know, more teachers, but then we have to look at, can we trade paras in for teachers? So we're going to, you know, really look at how we can better provide our service delivery, because a lot of it is pullout right now, and kids are being pulled out during time where they should be in the classroom, and the co-teaching model can just definitely ensure that we're more aligned with the curriculum, the students are supported in the classroom, and they have a, you know, a teacher who's been trained to work with special ed students, supporting them in the classroom. I love our paraeducators, but sometimes we do have to put someone in to help students who really doesn't have that strong background. So I think in the end, if we can move towards a model with co-teaching, I think we're gonna see more success academically, reduced behaviors, and just all around, you know, better functioning of our students.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions in regards to this, this site budget? I will recognize Mr. Halleck first.
Thank you. I see that we're eliminating three para positions. I'm just kind of curious to why that is, and, and if those positions are positions that are currently not filled, or if those paras are being reassigned.
So, I don't know if you want to talk to what, because we've, it's like many parts to it, so I'll let you.
Sure, so in this specific situation, which I, under the two asterisks, oh, sorry, never mind, not under that asterisk, let me rewind. The paras are decreased by three in this budget for next school year because we currently have, we had to hire behavior technicians in lieu of a para based on specific IEP requests, and we were able to not outplace in order to provide this type of employee assistance versus a para. So, we chose to do that instead of $100,000 outplacement. So we reduced three FTEs as a para, and we added three FTE behavior techs, which you would see when, in the elementary and Windsor High School on that FTE page.
May I ask you a question now?
It did, yes.
Any other questions, sir?
No, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, I saw Mr. Fury's hand and Mr. Pennell's before I even looked to my right, so I'll entertain Mr. Fury first.
Thank you. Staying in, oh.
I don't know, did somebody else have a question related to that? I think Mr. Wallaston?
If it's related, if it's related, you yield?
No, no.
Yep.
Did Mr. Wallaston?
No, I'm asking, are you yielding, because I recognize you.
I thought you recognized me.
He's, he's right.
Yeah, I'm yielding, if it's related.
Mr. Wallaston?
I'm sorry. I just wondered, what's the difference between the, the paraeducator line with 89 and then the line with just five? I just wondered if there's anything different.
So, the highlighted areas, that darker color, that's for grants? No, it's today!
No, just for your knowledge, it's highlighted right there, sir.
Yeah, it's...
Mr. Fury?
Thank, thank you. The, the board adopted budget said 89 paraeducators. Do we have 89 right now?
We have more currently than 89.
Okay. The biggest question I have really has to do with the bottom of the page, and that is the middle section BOE adopted budget, and then the superintendent's proposed budget, which is a 21.38% increase. And I don't know if it's a question for you or Ms. Batchelder, but are we, I guess the first question for Ms. Batchelder may be, are we gonna blow through that approved budget number of $5,584,894?
This year, you mean?
Yeah.
This year? Yes, we're still gonna be, yeah.
So...
I mean, every, we were in constant communication, like, you know, check, someone moved, yay, check, some, you know, we brought...
There was an instant, I'm not kidding, last week where we realized one of our outplaced students does not live in town, so we were able to make sure they registered in their new district. Literally four hours later, we found out we had a student register in town in a different out-of-district placement. Like, it was within four hours.
So, the, the increase of 21.38%, is that partially due, I guess, to, we already know we really have a higher number this year? Or is, how many, is it of anticipated new people coming into the district, or?
So, what we did, so last year, because that was the first year we were really, you know, after the pandemic, we were hopeful that maybe we would see some relief after '21, '22, because if you remember, prior to the pandemic, our numbers were very, stayed pretty consistent. We were only raising the budget by a couple hundred thousand, I mean, that's a lot, but not on top of, you know, 6 million, 5 million. And then the pandemic hit, and we just skyrocketed the tuition out of, out of district, mind you, the same number of kids, but the price tag of those kids went up. So, last year, we only added 3% to the budget, and then as the year went by, we just were more in the hole than we thought when we originally budgeted for this year, last year. So I'm literally taking what we currently have to date, adding a percentage on it, and that's why it's so high. That's what I, that's the actual, I think, we're gonna be spending next year. If you lower it, we're gonna be in the hole again.
What is about the percentage, it's not, you're not adding 21% because the figure is, is actually gonna be higher by the time we close the books this year? So what percent did you use, or is it, is that based on?
Yep.
Some of the out of, the things we can't control, which is whatever, if it's, if the place is the proper place for a student and they, and that's what it costs, then that's what we have to pay?
Yes. Sorry, if you just give me one second, I can tell you. It tacked on a 2% increase.
What's that again? A 2%?
2% increase over what we're projecting for this school year.
Okay, thank you.
In that connection, in that connection, I suppose that you can see that the proposed budget is, is about an 8% increase over two years ago. The 23, 24 that you're proposing is only 8% more than the 21, 22 budget, which was 6,2, 6,255, so you went, so it's, so I suppose it's consistent here that this is, this sort of thing is to be expected, it's not, it's not 34%, you know? So it's, it's kind of understandable, I think.
That's some positive thinking there, I like it.
Yeah.
I saw his wife before this, and she said he was gonna be...
And this is recorded, too?
Yes.
Are you set, Mr. Pennell?
I, yes, I am, I think, I think I can understand this.
I appreciate your discussion around the training, and I'm just trying to understand if you have enough money in the budget to provide training for your staff, particularly the training for paras around, like, what are their, what's the orientation, and, you know, the extra training that you're providing? I think it's really important that people understand the ways to support children, and also, parents, they also understand the rights, the roles and responsibilities of each person that's interacting with their lives, and so I just wonder if you have adequate funding around training?
I think it fall, it does fall under the PSCS, but we did increase some money, not, you know, crazy increase, but we were seeing that we were overspending kind of our professional development budget, so we did add some money into that line. Our special education coach has been just like a godsend, I mean, her whole job is to meet with teachers on a weekly, bi-weekly basis in order to really help them, orient them, answer their questions. You know, both Ms. Batchelder and I anticipate that our IDEA grant, every year gets higher, so I think one of the things we want to look at with that IDEA grant moving forward is, do we do more special ed coaching, do we write some more contracted time into the IDEA grant? But we have already accounted for some of the increase in that need for the professional development.
Thank you.
So, while I do agree that the financial aspect of training is really important, I, I think process is also important, so, I mean, I don't know if we're supposed to question process or not, but I would, I'd just plug that as equal to what we spend, the time we take to either ease the new paras into the classroom, even though, I mean, in, in essence, we're kind of spending the money anyways because we're not immediately getting that return of having a para in the class, we might, I don't, I'm not sure exactly what the process you guys have for new paras, so I can't really comment on that, but I would say even just a process of just having...
Yeah, that is, it's a, it's a really good point that you bring up, because with our certified staff, a majority of the staff that we hire, fingers crossed, are hired for an August start date. You know, we've hired a few here and there after the August, you know, the August, whatever the day we started school. Paraeducators, we've lost over the course of the past few years for a variety of reasons, and so we have hired a great deal of paras to fill those places, and it is an area that we think is a weakness because we're trying to onboard them on a Wednesday. They can start on a Wednesday, so we're trying to onboard them. So we're looking at things like creating some virtual professional development for them, so if they're starting on a Wednesday, maybe when they come into the building, they can spend the first two hours, you know, listening or watching some kind of interactive module that just gives them some basic information about what the building looks like, where they go to make a copy, that, how they sign in. So that is something that we've started to look at and kind of build out of what we'd want that to, to have. We've also tried more this year to have paras shadow for multiple days before they're actually put into a placement. So they might start on a Monday, but the first three days that they are in the building, they work following someone else that's working with the student, or work directly with our board-certified behavioral analyst, so they can really learn the student, their disability, their plans, the strategies that they're supposed to implement. But it is tough because we need those bodies, so sometimes I don't think we give them enough training, so it is an area that we've been thinking about and trying to be creative with, because we, with the amount that we're hiring, Sarah can't get to all of them to onboard, the, the coach, but if we could do something virtually, then at least there would be, you know, some pretty thorough introductory information that they can obtain.
Yes, sir? Ms. Taylor?
So for me, just give her the money, right? Because it's so important. You've got robotics. So, my thing, when we're talking about like culture and climate, not only for, for our, you know, the adults, we're talking about the kiddos, and when you're thinking about bringing people in, and it's almost like a, you know, a revolving door of the adults in the place, and these students don't know them, and it is difficult for them to, to, you know, to build trust, especially when we're talking about our most fragile kiddos. So I guess what I'm saying is, whatever needs to happen to make sure that we are bringing people into these spaces with these children, of course, there's a vetting process and hiring process prior to, but we don't know until it's action and go time, just to make sure, you know, people are appropriate for the positions, because I just know, you know, paras aren't paid enough, right? Paras aren't paid enough, and if we can't really throw money at it, what we can do is at least make it just a reciprocal cohesive process, so they, they feel like they're adding to the space, and then on top of it, they'll want to stay because it wasn't just a, you know, thrown to the wolves, because it's hard. I have a son in the space, and you know that, and it's, when there's a new adult and they don't know, and the kid doesn't know, it, it creates friction, and then it, it kind of just snowballs, and, and I feel like paras just don't get the credit that they, they deserve, because it is a lot. And then, then it turns into a lot for the, the classroom teacher, who has to sort of, you know, pause and make sure everybody is good. So I guess my, my thing is, are we adding enough funding for that beyond the, you know, the actual, the FTEs? Are we adding enough funding when it comes to professional development, onboarding, whatever the, the terminology is? Do, do you think that that's the case? Because you say, it says 89, but there's more than 89 paras, but for me, it's quality over quantity, and getting people that are gonna stick around, so we don't have to continuously do this thing so often.
Yeah, and I, I mean, besides adding bodies, I think it's to retain those bodies, and there's a contract negotiation coming up, but we are losing to other districts because of that pay, and I think Danielle and, you know, Dr. Hill acknowledge that, and obviously, we can't move mountains and pay people, you know, huge pay increases, but I think taking a look at that baseline and our kind of table of what they earn. And then, as far as the professional development goes, also just being more mindful, I think we for, I don't want to say we forget about paras, but they are scheduled from eight to three. They get a 30-minute lunch, and so just really looking at how we're utilizing them, and is there even opportunities? I know we're starting to also do this in some of the buildings, where we're starting like para committees, where they can give feedback, and then also encouraging paraeducators to lead some of the professional development. So when it's a half-day and there's something building base that really does not make sense for the paras to participate in, do we have some para leaders that can then work with the newer paras to build their capacity? So I think we've really tried hard in the past three years to think outside of the box and solve problems in different ways, not to put any attention on Mr. Halleck, but I think his wife is actually leading a PD on February 7th, so we threw it out to the paraeducators, and we said, "We'll help you." Like, "We'll help you come up with a schedule of what your two-hour block should look like." And a lot of the paras do have really unique skills, or they've been working with a certain population for a really long time. I think sometimes we have new teachers come in, and the paraeducators kind of have a better grasp on what's going on, where that first year, they're kind of helping each other. So we're looking, sometimes it's not as much about funding as it, how do we use the expertise that we have? And we have so many smart, strong-working, capable people within our district that we tap into. I think some people I tap into too much, where I have to say to myself, "I gotta stop asking them to do me this favor, they're gonna leave," because they're always, you know, doing us favors, but really thinking about how we do things and not doing them just the way we've always done them, because it, it doesn't make sense. And, like I said, we have some great experts within the paraeducator field that we want to lean on, and get, and, and they're honest, and they'll tell me, and, you know, it's hard to listen to sometimes, because I feel bad, you know, they are frustrated, but at least when we know what the issues are and we hear them out, they also feel better that they have some input into some of the things that we're looking at.
Mr. Wallaston?
I was just wondering, how many vacancies do we have for paras, if any?
I could get that number, but I'm gonna be honest, it's been kind of so bad this year that, you know, we lose sometimes a para after four days of work, and so the number is just in flux. So I can get you a number, I know I, we're short at Paquonic or OWE by one person, I know of that at least, sometimes we're fully staffed, and then the next day, we lose someone. So I can, you know, give you a to-date number, like, you know, as of tomorrow, what our vacancies are looking at.
I was just wondering, because, like, is there any sort of like retention, like incentive that you guys do at all?
As far as like a monetary retention?
I was just wondering, I was, I was wondering if there were vacant positions, if, you know, some of the money that's not being used to hire paras?
So let me clarify the vacant, first of all, we're over our budgeted amount of paras, so that's what, I don't know if you guys missed that part?
No.
Yeah, we're over, but folks are still asking for paras and needing them in certain places, so when you budgeted last year, we're over that number, but just to clarify for the rest of this year, no, we have no incentives, no programs, but we're about to start negotiations. So we're gonna take into account what all the other districts are doing, and we'll, we'll negotiate the best deal possible.
Any other discussion? Ms. Clays? I'm sorry, Mr. Pennell, then Ms. Clays?
The, the legal costs, where do they, where are they covered for, sometimes they can be pretty high, are they under another budget?
Yeah, so like, special ed, Christina has her legal line, I have my legal line, Dr. Hill has his legal line.
Okay, but it's not, it's not in special ed budget?
It is, it's right here.
Oh. Oh, it is?
Right here.
It's in the middle.
Oh, it is, okay.
Three down. Thirty-three thousand right here.
Oh, yeah. Okay, that's a heavy, uh, yeah.
All set, Ms. Panos?
Yep, thank you.
Ms. Clayce?
Um, yeah, I just had a couple of questions. So you talked about how, um, some of the paras have been participating in, um, professional development and attending, um, things after their day, I think, some, or during the half, uh, after their day, the three voluntarily?
Um, well, last summer, we did run some voluntary professional development that we paid them to attend.
Okay.
Um, on early release days, um, those Tuesdays that occur, they have to work their full day. So a lot of times what's happening in the buildings is very pertinent to what they need to learn, whether it's, um, you know, restorative practices, for example. So they participate along with the certified staff in that professional development. Um, then there's days like November eighth and we're coming up on February seventh where it's a full-day professional development. So for example, this coming, um, February seventh, for four hours in the morning, they will, um, be doing like choice professional development based on, you know, the jobs that they do during the day. And then towards the end of the day for two hours, they will be joining their building. So it's really kind of a, um, it really depends on what the situation is. Also, like elementary, there's three conference days during the school year and those are sometimes hard for us to plan PDs for them, but that's where we're looking to have some of them, um, run their own professional development. So there are those pockets of opportunity.
Great. I would just encourage us, if we can find a way to pay staff who are doing, you know, developing those things. And also I would encourage us to be as generous as possible for being competitive, um, in the contract negotiations. Thank you.
We're all set with this? Are we all set with this site?
Sure.
All right, thank you. Before I turn it over to Mr., uh, to Dr. Hill, it is eight forty-one. Hard stop is at nine o'clock unless the board votes to continue to move past nine, but hard stop at nine. So, well, I'm just letting the board know where we are. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm now gonna go over my section, district policy and planning. And you see, I'm not gonna read all these to you, but just the major goals for twenty-three, twenty-four is continue to work in establishing focus on culture slash climate and academics. Um, I think you've heard that, uh, most clearly from Dr. Haiti and Ms. Feynman, that we are moving in that direction. So when I, when I talk about culture and climate, I'm talking about first and foremost the, um, connection between the relationships with students and staff, staff and staff, students and students, and of course, staff to families so that we create a, an environment which is, you know, conducive to increased learning and better performance for students academically. We're gonna continue to embed the SEL work in our curriculum and instructional efforts and that's already starting to happen so that it's not just seen as some, uh, set aside or standalone thing. It is actually, um, in the works and being put into, uh, the curricula as we're developing our new curricula, that we have, uh, pieces in there or, um, not units, what would we call them? My indicators. Thank you very much, thank you. Indicators, uh, SEL indicators in our curricula work so that it, again, teachers know, no matter what the curriculum they're teaching, the indicators for SEL work are in that curriculum document so that they are including this. Because again, I don't want this to be some set aside or standalone thing and they say, "Oh, now we're gonna do an SEL lesson." It's, it's embedded in everything we do. And then, uh, we have a major goal of negotiating pretty much, uh, two contracts for UPSU, um, bargaining units, para educators, custodial maintenance, food service, and safety monitors. So we have to take care of that. Um, we already know that we have to give the para educators a lot of money because that's what Ms. Clayce just said. So that's, that's the goal and per usual, this is a zero percent budget for my department. And I can see a lot of the, the budget is actually, uh, monetarily up for the BOE. So this is where the BOE, for those who just, if you don't recall, this is where your, your costs sit in my budget.
Any discussion? I believe this was, this is a rollover budget from last year when we asked him to cut to bare bones and that's what he did. So he's just presenting exactly what he gave us last year. That is my understanding of this site.
Did you, uh?
And that's inclusive of CAE, NSBA, um, NASDAQ, WNTV, CAE professional development, um, speakers, um, allow him for CAS, stuff like that. So it's all rollover. Any discussion?
Yeah, we got a list last year, didn't we, of these, of the contracted services? I think we did last year. Can you?
I'm not gonna trust my memory, so I'm gonna check.
You asked for them as a question and I followed up the next meeting.
Yep.
It was not a normal thing. It was the first time last year you asked the question. So then that process, I come next time with whatever question you have. So if that's the question, I'll come with-
Yeah, would you?
Contracted services.
Are you anticipating the same list as last year?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, maybe-
Panos?
Yeah, maybe sometime you could, we get some more, uh, uh, you know, more on, on, on what the culture and climate is that you're, that you're mentioned here several times. Do we get a better idea? I, I understand this is a relationship, but what are the specifics?
So that, that's the specific. I'm not being funny at all. I've said it for like two years now. So the district knows the culture because I want to change the culture. We need to build better relationships with students and staff.
Mm-hmm.
So we say specifically, I'm giving it to you, we need to build better relations with students and staff, students and students, right? This is something the board extensively expanded on with me during my evaluation, right? When you talked about fights and other things, that, that's part of culture, right? We come to school to learn. We don't come to school to fight or to engage in those things, right? And also, be- because I've done this thirty years, teachers, you come, you don't just come and say, you know, "Here, I'm just throwing out this lesson." You're responsible for helping to create that environment as well in the building. So that means you're in the hallways, you're connecting with students. Um, I said, I believe in December meeting, so I'm expecting staff to be at games. I don't see staff at games. Now, while some may think that's not important, I disagree. I disagree as a teacher, as a principal, and as a superintendent. That's part of building the culture so that we're connected all the way around. And when you have that environment, then my experience in my career shows that you get the increased academic performance. The other piece in that culture is a culture around looking at the data as Dr. Haiti and Ms. Feynman discussed. So not just saying, "Oh, we see data, our test score is at the end of a particular time period necessarily," but you're constantly looking at your data and understanding, "How do I adapt my lessons for my students?" That's, that's, that's it. And if I try to make it too crazy, then people really won't, you know, get it.
Well, that's what I mean. I mean, uh, some time, well, those are the more specific aspects. That's what I'm asking for. I mean, you gave me, what, three items here at least, you know, um, that, that the, the student, but, you know, just how, for example, you have the students are gonna come here for academics and not fighting and what are some of the specifics that you are doing a- about that? Or are you gonna have the teachers go out in the hallway and, you know?
Oh, I, I agree, but if-
You know, you can, you know, you don't have to do it here. I'm just saying.
No, no, I'm saying, but I, I've said this repeatedly for two years. Like, so I'm not, I've said it over and over again. Like, I want teachers to do this, I want students to do that. It, it's, it's, I've kept it simple, Mr. Panos, so that my teachers and my students don't get confused. So when I deal with students, right, as I've shared, we had a couple of expulsions. I said, "So did I send a letter to the parents and students? Did I send you a letter in August?" "Yes, you did, Dr. Hill." "Was my letter clear?" And there was not a lot of words there because my experience tells me when you communicate, lots of words mean nothing.
Right.
When you're concise-
What, what, what is a comp, you know?
Right. And like, your purpose for coming to school-
Is it being gone, how much of it?
To learn. That is your purpose, not to get involved in fights or to argue or to wander hallways or to hide in bathrooms. That is not your purpose.
Or to wear your pants down.
Well, I didn't put that in my letter. I said, "I did cover that by saying follow board policy as it's established currently." And I've told parents, Mr. Panos, so you know, if you don't agree with something, you have the right to come to the board, audience and visitors and speak. And then conversely with the staff, um, as, so Dr. Haiti and I, you know, this semester in particular, are now meeting with departments separately. They heard me as a whole group across the district, um, and I check in with folks as I go through the schools. But now particularly, I said out in August, I was gonna focus on the high school because that is the bread and butter. And so as I meet with departments, I'm reminding people of what I said in August. And so when we're asking for changes that we have been asking for and they give their feedback, I'll put it that way, I'm like, "Feedback's been duly noted? This is how we're moving forward." Because this is the culture that we're gonna have. So no one's confused. They may not like something, but they're not confused about my expectations.
Mr. Panos?
I just didn't write paragraphs here, Mr. Panos, but I'll, I'll always discuss it, but I just didn't, you know, I just try to keep it a one-pager, just to keep it.
All right.
But I'll, I'll always explain it, no problem.
Any other discussion for this site?
Thank you.
I am seeing none. Next site, Ms., um, Dr. Hill?
So the next site-
Employee Personnel Services?
Employee Personnel Services, so we'll have Ms. Batshelder, she'll finish up number nine and number ten.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, um, Employee Personnel Services, um, it's really very similar to what Dr. Hill, um, stated regarding all the contracts. So we are entering in, um, two, uh, four different, um, union contracts this spring, um, all non-certified. So we are, um, getting prepped already for that and, um, I will, uh, begin that process soon. My goal is to get it done by June thirtieth. Unfortunately, non-cert contracts are not, uh, dictated by state law like teachers and administrators, so they can just go on and on. Um, but, um, my goal is to get moving and get going on all of them. Other than that, that is, um, really the, the overall for Employee Personnel Services if you, if you have any questions.
Any questions? It seems like it's a rollover amount.
Yep.
Only thing is different is just going more, um, negotiations with non-certified staff this particular, um, fiscal year.
Yep.
Any discussion? I am hearing and seeing none. I am gonna move on to the next site. Through you, Dr. Hill, Ms. Batshelder?
Okay. So this again is, um, pretty, uh, much a rollover also. But I do wanna point out that we successfully completed the fiscal year twenty-two audit. Um, so that is now behind us, um, with no, um, write-ups, which is, um, uh, and I just wanna highlight also, we're also constantly, um, in communication on the safety aspect of it with Windsor PD and Fire, um, and town of Windsor staff on making sure we're all on the same page with all of the safety and security measures within, within the buildings. One of the areas that I am pushing, um, this next, this year into next year is to implement a frontline central, which is just more, um, streamlining the hiring process. We still, even with all of the technology that we have, we're still pushing paper like you wouldn't believe in HR. So on the hiring, so we have everything electronic once they're, once they get hired, but it's the amount of stuff that gets sent to employees, I just wanna streamline that. If I was the employee, I'd be like, "Ah, what am I doing?" Like, I got five different emails saying all these different things, so I'm really trying to just clean that up, streamline it, um, and go from there.
Any discussion on this site? Recognize, Ms. Clayce?
Can you, um, tell me how many copiers are included in that contract price for the copier service? You don't have to tell me today if you don't-
Okay.
Yeah. And then I have another question as well. Um, do people have individual printers as well in?
Yeah, so we actually, uh, I got a big kudos to Kevin behind me, um, because he really went through and over the past few years, we just, we literally just took them out. Summertime came, we took them out. And they came, and people came back, they were angry, but we're not supporting them. So now we're on an actual print service plan. We know when things are expiring, um, and we have every, all of our copiers, everything is by, you know, badge, so you can't just keep running copiers if you're not an employee. So, but I'll get you the exact number.
Thank you.
Going green. I, I can see us going green. Well, Mr. Panos, don't you see us going green, sir?
Considering, considering the enormous, you know, increases in the cost of technology, I think to me, we oughta go back.
To the Diddo Machine.
Did I?
[laughing].
Yeah, so, I mean, did I?
You have a question, sir?
Well, I'm sure I have a question.
I'll recognize Mr. Fury if you don't have one.
Okay, well, if Mr. Fury wants to, I, you know, I do have questions, but go ahead.
Mr. President?
Uh, one of the things that, to me, uh, jumped out at me was the number of special ed students we have transported, it says to twenty-five facilities. I mean, that just really talks about the kind of nature of, of, of making sure the students are being placed in the, in an appropriate setting, but just, it's a big number.
And we jab, jab share. We, uh, share with other towns all the time through Haven, um, as much as possible. You know, if they're coming through, we, they pick our kids up and then we keep going.
Um, it says, I know one of the goals was finishing the air conditioning this summer. I know there were still a couple phases to go. Is that gonna be all done by the end of this year or?
So actually, I was at the CIP meeting last night and JFK got approved, even though, I mean, it's our money paying for the, um-
Don't go there.
-finalized phase. So that's gonna happen this summer. So after that, all of our schools will be fully air-conditioned. Um, well, Sage Park is still, has phase two this summer, um, and then phase three next summer. But they're slow, they have some areas already.
They're kind of going different sections of the building for each phase is-
Right.
-a different part of the building?
Yep, exactly.
I know the upstairs was really-
Right.
-needed first.
Yep.
Yeah. The other thing I, I hate to bring up, but I'm going to, um, on, on the goals for next year, continue to work with DATCO in securing enough bus drivers to fill our fleet.
That is for Jill.
Yeah, well, Jill, Jill'll jump on top of it, even despite me asking the questions here, but can you describe it all, what-
So-
We're doing on that?
So this site is actually, if you flip to the next page, on page thirty-two, this includes transportation if, okay, so. An area of the budget we chose to reduce was in transportation for next school year. So our current fleet, we believe that we need two more, possibly three more buses that we current, above and beyond what we currently drive this year, not what our contraction, contracted number was three years ago. If we have three more, two or three more buses, um, and bus drivers, we believe that in a few spares, we believe we're, we're good for transportation. So what we did was we, um, reduced the number in transportation close to about four hundred thousand, which is why that negative four point four eight is sitting there. So we, um, we reduced the number, we talked with DACO already, so, um, everything is, you know, legit and legal. So that is the plan to move forward, that we will not have this number of bus drivers that we originally put out, or excuse me, number of buses from our original bid.
But I, I still think that the question is how do, how do we-
So, yep.
We had trouble filling this number, now we're may add in two more buses. What are, what kinds of things might we be doing this summer?
Yep, so they have, we've met with them extensively. So, um, they are now, um, enter, implementing paid training. So they've never had paid training, so a driver would actually, close to, I think, two months, three months, they would be employees of DACO but never got paid going through all the training. So they have implemented, if we hired, if DACO hires them, they will get paid, not at the, the top rate of a bus driver, but they will get paid in order to do all of the training that's necessary to become certified bus driver. So that's one thing. Um, and they believe that that, I think that's gonna be a huge thing. I didn't even realize that they didn't pay them. I, I was shocked when we heard that. I didn't even realize that they didn't pay them, I, I was shocked when we heard that. So I believe, because where we sit now, we're equal, we just don't have subs. So we've, we've able, we have been able to get more drivers just in the past couple months. It's just, if someone calls out, that's when we have to double up. So I want to say I'm hopeful, I feel like I said that last year, but it's better now than it was at the start of the school year.
Is that something that we can track during the summer? How are they doing with?
Oh, yeah, no, no, we track it, they send me, they send me bi-weekly emails, number of drivers, number of people in training, number that's just waiting for the DMV to sign off. We have something through the state, I believe, through CAPS or CASBO, one of the institutions, that we're, again, we're trying to get at the DMV level, so they can get through quicker and certify and get all the licenses they need, because that is still a bottleneck part of it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Panos?
You know, that was, well, I was just wondering how you got the reduction, because you went through, you know, almost a $400,000 reduction in the regular ed bus drive, so I didn't understand that. I appreciate what you're saying here, that you got them to pay the driver, that seemed, like, that's kind of shocking that they weren't paying them anything, that's for the training, but, but, so, how did you, it went down, well, I guess it's not that much from, well, almost $100,000 from two years ago, but, so, I guess my question is, why is it less? Do we have fewer buses? We expect fuller, fewer buses?
Yes, that's what, yes.
That was you-
Yeah, so we've been op-
You really need more.
We don't need as many as we contract that original bid. We don't. We, I, we don't need that many.
Oh.
I mean, we're sitting at nine right now, that was originally contracted.
Right.
Granted, when we did that, that's when we used to root ourselves, we used to have actual employee that did all the roots, we had Rainbow. So when we wrote that initial bid, that's what we thought we needed. And then DACO coming in, they have a new system, they're rooting, they're the experts in that. And through the transition, you know, parents started bringing kids after the pandemic more, they, and they're consistently bringing kid, their children, so.
I don't know, I somehow had it in my mind that we didn't have enough buses.
We don't. We don't have enough-
Okay, maybe I should stop.
We don't, we don't have enough drivers.
Okay. Okay, buses we have, we don't have drivers. That's, that's-
Is there any other comments?
We're all done.
I, I hear the paid training aspect, but you know what? They're gonna, it's just like any other license or trade, you're gonna get the license, now you're marketable, and then someone's gonna know you got the training, they're gonna offer you more money and pull you away.
They have to do, they have to do so much.
No, that license, that license is, is to-
License, but they're, they're not just doing it and you get to walk away, there's always a deal. Just like, when I pay for someone to agree, I have to make a contract with them, you're not leaving here without paying them all the money. It's not, that's not illegal.
I, I agree with you, I've just, I'm just, I'm, I used to be optimistic about the bus company, not as much these days, so I'm cautiously being realistic. So I think that's a nice way of putting it. I think we've satisfied this site. There's one thing left. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, do you want to have a question?
No, I don't have a question. No question.
No question.
If there are no more questions, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Fury, second by Mr. Panos to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing, seeing, and hearing none, all those favors signified by standing on.
Aye.
All the same, abstention, motion carries 9:00, we are adjourned at 9:03 PM. Have a good evening. Thank you, sir. You got to do.